Everyone, please stand for the next move. Pledge allegiance. Aye. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, March 3, 2015. The time is now eight twelve pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231. Notice of this meeting was published in the December 11, 2014, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on Fine and Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Pacheco?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
We'll move on to minutes, please.
Yes, Mayor. We have regular Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for February 3, 2015.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes for February 17, 2015.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That's it for minutes, Mayor.
Hey, I see we do not have any communications or correspondence tonight. We will move on to the bills, please.
Yes, Mayor. Public Affairs. Revenue and Finance, $2,403,088.29. Public Safety, $40,688.31. Public Works, $134,238.92. Parks and Public Property, $737,228.15. Total Payroll, $1,026,041.47. For a grand total of $4,343,678.82.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you. We will move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Mayor, thank you. Resolution 64-15. Whereas in 1988, the month of March was designated by the United States Congress as National Women's History Month, whereas Women's History Month promotes the teaching of women's history and the achievements of women throughout the world, and whereas it is important for the residents of the township to recognize the growing contributions and achievements of women in the township of Nutley and the state of New Jersey. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that all citizens of Nutley observe the month of March as Women's History Month, at which time all of the residents may join in commemorating women, past and present, who have rendered a service to our nation, our state, and our township. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley calls upon all citizens of Nutley to observe International Women's Day, Sunday, March 8, a global day celebrating the economic, political, and social achievements of women past, present, and future since 1911. Before I move on this, there's, just for the record, I'd like to state something that I'd say about two or three months ago, I was going through some family items, and I found a certificate that was awarded to my mother in the 1940s for working in a factory for bolting tanks for the fellows that were over there during the war times. And it dawned upon me then that, you know, when we were in school, high school or elementary school, we really weren't told these things. We learned about our troops overseas, we learned about fighting, we learned about what, I guess, we as men did. But to be able to look at that history and contributions like that, and to be able to stand here today and say, "Look, as a body, we're going to at least commemorate some of that," I think we've come a long way. So it rather struck me that hopefully, as time goes on, we'll be able to hear more about what women have done for this country. So on that basis, I so move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the request for qualifications for insurance, accident, and safety review board meetings were received and opened on February 11, 2015 by the township clerk, and whereas C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, LLC, 410 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has provided these services in the past, the Township of Nutley is particularly suited to provide continued service, and whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on January 1, 2015, and continuing through December 31, 2015, with the option to extend one year, and whereas funds are available from account 5-516-245 in the amount of $10,000 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency as described herein. The response to the RFQ shall be placed on file with this resolution, and notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with the local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
I abstain. I do some business with several insurance.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services for a consultant and risk manager for the Township of Nutley through a fair and open process pursuant to NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the RFQ for consultant and risk manager were received and opened on February 11, 2015 by the township clerk, and whereas C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency, 410 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the most responsible and responsive to the request for qualifications, and whereas a contract for professional risk management consulting services is required in the bylaws of the Suburban Essex Liability Joint Insurance Fund, this contract shall not exceed $34,500 for years 2015, 2016, and the funds are available from the Suburban Essex Joint Insurance Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to C. Walter Searle Insurance Agency as described herein. Be it further resolved that the response to the RFQ for consultant and risk manager be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
I abstain.
Whereas sealed bids received for the Department of Parks and Public Property for the DPW Garage Roof Replacement Phase 1, whereas Daskel LLC, 21 Stevens Road, Unit 210, Wellington, New Jersey, was the low bidder, whereas the Township has received six bids for the Department of Public Works Garage Roof Replacement Phase 1, the lowest in the amount of $101,200 from Daskel LLC, and whereas the Township of Nutley is amending Resolution 62-15, and whereas funds are available from capital ordinance 3149B in the amount of $1,059.97, capital ordinance number 3242A in the amount of $317.78, and capital ordinance 3294K in the amount of $99,822.25, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for the DPW Garage Roof Replacement Phase 1 be awarded to Daskel LLC, 21 Stevens Road, Wellington, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire professional electrical services, and whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids for electrical services, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the sealed bids will be received on Wednesday, March 25, 2015, at 3:00 PM, addressed to the municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the RFQ for qualified academy for training youth soccer programs was received and opened on February 11, 2015 by the township clerk, and whereas two responses to the request for proposal were received, and whereas the Soccer Factory, 175 Beaver Brook Road, Lincoln Park, New Jersey, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service, and whereas the anticipated term of this contract is commencing March 10, 2015, through December 31, 2015, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $45,000, and funds are available from account T-24-909-909, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to the Soccer Factory, 175 Beaver Brook Road, Lincoln Park, New Jersey, as described herein. Be it further resolved that the response to the RFQ be placed on file with this resolution, and be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire grant consulting services through a fair and open process pursuant to NJSA 194420.5, and whereas Millennium Strategies, 60 Roseland Avenue, Caldwell, New Jersey, has completed and submitted a request for qualifications for grant consulting services which complies with the provisions of NJSA Whereas the Township has informed, has formed a committee to consider all proposals based upon a range of criteria including technical management and cost, whereas based upon the recommendation of the committee, Millennium Strategies provides the best overall service to the township, whereas the term of the contract is for 12 months from January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015, total not to exceed $39,990, whereas funds are available from account 501209205, subject to the adoption of the 2015 municipal budget, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, as follows. One, a contract shall be entered into between the Township of Nutley and Millennium Strategies, 60 Roseland Avenue, Caldwell, New Jersey, for grant consulting services. Two, a copy of this resolution as well as the contract shall be placed on file with the township clerk. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas Resolution Number 60-15 was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, February 18, 2015, and whereas that resolution was correct in all respects except for an error in referencing the name on the license to be transferred, and whereas the correct name shall read as follows, Carino Di Maggio LLC to GLO Group LLC. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby amend Resolution Number 60-15 to correct name to read Carino Di Maggio LLC to GLO Group LLC. All other aspects of Resolution Number 60-15 remain as stated therein. The Board of Commissioners further directs the municipal clerk to send one copy of the amended resolution to the State of New Jersey, Office of the Attorney General, Division of Alcohol Beverage Control. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Dorothy Conlin, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, be granted an extension of medical leave of absence without pay effective December 1, 2014, through March 31, 2015. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Sandra Carbone, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, be granted an extension of medical leave of absence without pay effective February 5, 2015, through March 31, 2015. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Resolution of the Township, Commissioners of the Township of Nutley designating and declaring certain property within the township a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, Township Commissioners identified a certain properties in the Township of Nutley designated as follows the official tax map of the township of Nutley. Block 102, lots 2 and 9, block 200, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 24, block 201, lot 1, block 300, lots 1 and 20, block 2,000, lots 1 and 4, and 5, block 2,100, and lot 9, C0101, lot 9, C0102, lot 9, C0103, lot 9, C0104, lot 9, C0105, lot 9, C02110, lot number 9, C0211, lot 9, C0212, lot 9, C0214, lot 9, C0215, lot 9, C0216, and lot 9, C0217, block 2101, lot 1, and block 2304, lot 17, lot 18, C0001, lot 18, C002, lot 18, C003, and lot 18, C0203, also known as the Hoffman Road Site to be considered for designation as condemnation area in need of redevelopment under the local redevelopment housing law NJSA 40A-12A-1ET. Whereas on March 18, 2014, under Resolution Number 67-14, the Township Commissioners directed the planning board of the Township of Nutley to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether the study area or any portions thereof constitute a condemnation area in need of redevelopment according to the criteria set forth in NJSA 40A-12A-5, and whereas the Township Commissioners under Resolution Number 67-14 further directed the planning board to develop a map reflecting the boundaries of the study area to be included within the proposed redevelopment area, to conduct a public hearing pursuant to NJSA 40A-12A-6, and a draft report resolution to the Township Commissioners containing its findings. And whereas a preliminary investigation report entitled Redevelopment Study Area: Determination of the Need Hoffman Road Site/Clifton Hoffman Road Site, Township of Nutley, Essex County, New Jersey, dated February 5, was prepared by Major Consulting PA, whereas NJSA 40A-12A-6.B. of the LRHL provides in the pertinent part relative to the planning board, public hearing on preliminary investigation and whether the study area should be considered for designation as condemnation area in need of redevelopment. At the hearing, which may be adjourned from time to time, the planning board shall hear all persons who are interested and would be affected by determination that the delineating area is a redevelopment area. All objections to such determination and evidence in support of those objections given orally or in writing shall be received and considered and made part of the public record. 5A, after completing its hearing on this matter, the planning board shall recommend that the delineated area of any part thereof be determined or not determined by the municipal government body to be redevelopment area. Whereas on February 24, 2015, the planning board held a public hearing during which any persons interested in effect or affected by the determination that the study areas, redevelopment area, were given the opportunity to be heard, and any objections to such determination and evidence in support of those objections were received and considered and made part of the public record. Whereas the planning board concurred and agreed with the reasons stated in the preliminary investigation, that portions of the study area constitute and meet the criteria under the LRHL, supporting the recommendation that the portions of the study area be determined as condemnation area in need of redevelopment stated substantially as follows. Given the extreme nature of the economic impact facing both Nutley and Clifton, the criteria importance of the coordination between the two municipalities despite their difference county jurisdictions, we're recommending that the planning board of both municipalities formally find that the Hoffman Road Study Area of which the study area is part, with noted exclusion of block 102, lot 9, block 2,100, lot 9, and block 2304, lot 18 meets criteria E of the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A-12A-5, and the governing bodies of respective towns designate them as an area in need of redevelopment, and proceed with the development and the adoption of redevelopment plan to expedite the economic recovery for the benefit of the public welfare for both towns. Whereas the planning board further concurred and agreed with the reasons stated in the preliminary investigation, that certain portions of the study area do not constitute or meet the criteria under the LRHL, supporting the recommendation that the study area be determined a condemnation area in need of redevelopment stated substantially as follows. However, we also recommend that block 102, lot 9, block 2,100, lot 9, and block 2304, lot 18 be excluded from the designation as an area in need of redevelopment. As the former daycare center on block 102, lot 9 remains tenable and has not been vacant long enough to qualify under the criteria B, while block 2,100, lot 9, and 2304, lot 18 are commercial condominiums with multiple owners besides Hoffman Road. They are not impacted by the area of the Hoffman Road Study Area and have not adversely impacted the economic welfare of the Township of Nutley, as have the other parcels in the study area. Whereas on February 24, 2015, the planning board further adopted the resolution attached here to recommendation that block 102, lot 2, block 200, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 24, block 201, lot 1, block 300, lots 1 and 20, block 2,000, lots 1, 4, and 5, block 2,101, lot 1, and block 2304, lot 17, as shown on the official tax map of the Township of Nutley, be determined by the Township Commissioners to be condemnation area in need of redevelopment under the local redevelopment and housing law. Whereas the Township Commissioners concur and agree with the planning board's recommendation as supported by the reasons stated in the preliminary investigation that the property constitutes and meets the criteria under the LRHL, and the property should be determined and declared a condemnation area in need of redevelopment, which the determination shall, among other things, authorize the township to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire all of any portion of such property. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board, now therefore it be resolved by the Township Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that block 102, lot 2, block 200, lots 1 through 6, and 24, block 201, and block 300, lots 1 and 20, block 2,000, lots 1, 4, and 5, block 2,101, lot 1, and block 2304, lot 17, as shown on the official tax map of the Township of Nutley, is hereby designated a condemnation area in need of redevelopment under the local redevelopment housing law. Be it further resolved that the Township Commissioners hereby direct the township clerk to serve notice to blocks 102, lot 2, block 200, lots 1 through 6, and 24, block 201, lot 1, block 300, lots 1 and 20, block 2,000, lots 1, 4, and 5, 201, lot 1, and block 2304, lot 17 is designated as a condemnation redevelopment area on the Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, and within 10 days of the date hereof on the owners of such property and other parties as per NJSA 40A-12A-6.B., such notice stating that the determination hereon operates as finding of public purpose and authorizes the township to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire properties in the redevelopment area, and legal action to challenge the determination hereon must be commenced within 45 days of receipt of this notice such determination, and that failure to do so shall preclude an owner from later raising such challenges. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I suggest, after looking at 7515, that with counsel's permission, maybe we can...
Read that by title?
Read it by its title, but only pick up from whereas, on the second page, whereas on March 3, right? Because I think what I see is...
Do that, counsel?
Upper procedure?
Thank you very well.
It's a lot of redundant from the first...
Yes, it is. It's all the same. Resolution of Township Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for planning, design, and engineering services and related fiscal and analytical services for the preparation of the redevelopment plan. Whereas on March 3, 2015, the Township Commissioners concurred and agreed with the planning board and the reasons stated in the preliminary investigation, and designated and declared the property a condemnation area in need of redevelopment under the local redevelopment housing law NJSA 40A-12A-1. Whereas the Township Commissioners desire to issue a notice of request for proposals for planning, design, and engineering services and related fiscal and analytical services for preparation of the redevelopment plan for the property, and whereas all the proposals received will be evaluated on a basis of most advantageous, all factors considered inclusion, but not limited to, one, experience and reputation in the profession, two, knowledge of the subject matter to be addressed under the contract, three, availability of accommodate and any required meetings of the Township Commissioners, and four, any factors if demonstrated to be in the best interest of the township. Now therefore it be resolved by the Township Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the purchasing agent or other municipal office administrators, same, bein hereby is authorized to issue a notice of request for proposals for planning, design, and engineering services and related fiscal and analytical services for the preparation of the redevelopment plan for the blocks that we have already mentioned. Be it further resolved that no further action of the Township Commissioners shall be required in connection with this matter, and this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That concludes our business portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing, did you want to come up? No? Okay. Seeing no one before we adjourn, I just would like to say I do have my green tie on for a reason at tonight's meeting. We are celebrating St. Patrick's Day here in Nutley. Commissioner Evans also?
I got the memo.
Commissioner Rogers, almost green, I'm not sure. At any rate, the Nutley Irish are having their parade on Saturday. At what time does that start, Mr. Herrig? At 1 o'clock. And there's also a mass at St. Mary's at 10 o'clock. So if anyone could make it, we'd love to see you on the parade route. Also at this time, I would like to thank one of my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Scarpelli. I know that it seems to never stop snowing here in Nutley since you and I have taken office, but I do want to really commend you and everyone that works in DPW on really doing an outstanding job for the Township of Nutley. The roads here in town have been splendid, in my opinion, through this very ice storms, snowstorms, blizzards, and I have to tell you, I drive through a lot of towns and we really do a good job, and I know your guys are getting a little tired now because it's late in the season, but again, Commissioner Scarpelli, I'd just like to thank you for keeping the roads clear.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I'd also like to thank the residents for their patience, you know? We're out there plowing and they're shoveling and...
We're out there plowing and they're shoveling and their aprons get plowed back in, and we understand that can get frustrating for residents and see why we try to go curb to curb, you know, especially the first couple of snowstorms, it makes a difference. But once those roads narrow, it makes it much more difficult for our emergency vehicles to get through, and that's our priority, allow emergency access at all costs, and sometimes that is an inconvenience for our homeowners, and appreciate that. And I would like to acknowledge, not only have the men been out there working, plowing snow, we've also had over 20 water breaks over this season. So they're out there almost 24/70, they're plowing snow or fixing water main breaks. So it's been a long winter, but hopefully spring's around the corner.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Adjourn. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?